Call this meeting of the Common Council Committee of the whole to order roll call, please. And before we do that, we'd just like to go on the record as saying that we have, because of the current emergency, health emergency, we have waived the stipulation of attendance and we have two council members, Council President Bill Brandal and Council Member Peg Byer on speakerphone with us tonight. So we'll take roll call, please. First of all, those on speakerphone, please say your name.
Peg Byer.
Bill Brandal.
Perfect. Thank you.
Alderman Kraus.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Peachey.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Brandal.
Here.
Lars.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn it over to City Administrator Tim Freyte.
Great. Well, I think it'd be fair to say that we've witnessed some unprecedented events this past week, quite frankly, some things that I never really expected to encounter with a pandemic declaration by the World Health Organization, a federal emergency declaration, a state emergency declaration, a statewide school closing, and as we saw today, a limitation on public gatherings, which we'll talk about in just a little bit. But before we get into this discussion, and there is an action that will appear on the business agenda at 7:00 that we'll talk a little bit specifically about, but before we get to that point, Joe maybe can tell you a little bit about what the local Jefferson County conditions are.
Well, currently, no cases in the city or county of Jefferson. According to our departments, we do have...
Tim?
Tim.
Mike? Could you come to the podium, Joe? Thanks. And just make sure that green light is on.
All right. So currently, there's no cases. Speaking with our county health nurse in the health department for Jefferson, no positive cases in the county yet. We do have some cases surrounding us, quite a few actually, with Dane County with 19, Milwaukee Shaw with just four. But the Dane County 19, they don't know where a lot of them, those people got their virus from. So that's, now it's being spread throughout the population without any known contact with someone who traveled or had contact with someone positive. And of course, Milwaukee is the closest real hotspot with 24 cases at this time. Total of 72 cases for the state. Locally, watching social media, a lot of our businesses are preparing for this by extra cleaning, limiting how many people are in their businesses. And of course, with that new order today, a lot of bars and restaurants announced they were closed today at 5:00 PM other than their carryout. That's about all I have for the local... Yeah, no deaths locally.
I think what makes this outbreak different from others, say H1N1, is that we have a general lack of testing. Don't know where the outbreaks may have occurred in the state of Wisconsin. And I think in general, there's a lack of understanding of COVID-19 and its impacts, although that's changing the more researchers have an opportunity to discuss it. What it does provide for is a really anxious and nervous public. And, you know, my experience always tells me when you have a very anxious and nervous public, it leads to atypical behavior. So you see things that have been happening in grocery stores and things like that with runs on paper goods and foods. Actually, I'm not too surprised about that. But having said that, I wanted to take just a few seconds and just review with the board what the city's emergency government procedures are. By ordinance, the administrator and the chief of police are designated as the emergency government directors. The city does have a pretty comprehensive emergency management program. I think you probably brought a copy of that. I don't think any of you really want to get into it. It's certainly a cure for insomnia if you wanted to read the whole thing. The manual does include an infectious disease outbreak section. But one of the things that we think as the city tries to address this is our current policy really requires some additional treatment in the form of a new COVID-19 protocol that includes contingency planning, resource allocation planning, and general city protocols. And we'll kind of cover that during the next 10 or 15 minutes of our discussion. I think Ken, you handed out a copy of that. And that's been developed largely over the last, maybe, two weeks by staff working internally. So in terms of COVID-19 policy and protocol, we really have two concerns, right? We want to protect the public, and then we want to protect the workforce. And generally, if there's one thing that sort of keeps guys like Ken and I up at night, it's that large segments of the workforce would be infected, requiring that they stay away from the workforce, and then we'd have a hard time providing basic services, particularly essentially emergency government services. So that's the one I think we're extremely nervous about. Quite honestly, as the testing expands, we expect the impacts to be much more significant and much more widespread. And we think this is sort of a long-term event. A lot of the closings that have happened currently have taken place with the assumption of April 6th. You know, a lot of our closings tie to that same timeline, but quite frankly, internally, we're planning that this is a much longer event, and some of these closings stay in place well after April 6th. But I guess we'll see where we stand when it comes to that. So what I really want to let you know tonight is that in terms of workforce protection, what you can expect is there'll be quite a bit of additional sanitation of municipal facilities. There will be a reallocation of cleaning service time. We have some facilities, like the senior center that currently is closed. We'll allocate those hours to the police department and municipal building. And so we'll add extra days of cleaning. In between trips or visits by the cleaning service, you'll see city staff out sanitizing, wiping down flat surfaces, door handles, things like that. In addition, we will need to purchase additional supplies and protective gear. So supplies, obviously sanitation supplies, protective gear, gloves, masks, Tyvek suits, things like that. I would generally describe our inventory organizationally as adequate for the time being, but not abundantly so. So that means as materials become available, they're hard to get ahold of, quite frankly, but as they become available, you know, we'll be looking to make additional purchases as time goes on. The one big provision in the manual, the protocol manual that Ken handed out that I want to bring to your attention is that our policy provides that the city is going to provide up to 14 days of emergency sick leave for an employee who tests positive or an employee that may be quarantined at home because of contact with someone else that has tested positive. Those days would be subject to medical verification by a public health organization or a medical personnel. That may all be mute because it probably will be preempted at the end of the day by federal legislation that is expected to be approved, and the president has indicated he will sign. That not only grants 14 days of emergency sick leave, but it also provides additional family medical leave, wage and salary coverage for, I think that's up to 90 days, for any employee that may have to care for someone stricken at home, child, a family relative, whatever the case may be. But in the event that federal legislation doesn't materialize, our policy provides that, you know, we're going to provide 14 days of emergency sick leave for our employees.
Sick leave or...
Emergency sick leave if they're, up to 14 days, Jim.
Not short-term disability?
It's not short-term disability. It's income continuation in the form of sick leave for anyone that has a positive test or is forced to quarantine at home because of contact with someone who has, if it's medically verified. The one thing I would say is I would expect to spend some money, quite honestly, and one of the really good things that I think the city council did five or six years ago, and we did it primarily in response to just having to repetitively deal with annual flooding, we started to set fund balance aside in the form of an emergency fund. Now typically, we've used that to deal with fall and spring flooding, but we will carry that over and utilize that, or the plan is to utilize that to address some of these additional costs without putting pressure on the city's operating budget. So currently, that reserve is $50,000 of our fund balance. So if you have any questions about that, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them, but quite frankly, we're going to need to spend money. In terms of some of the public protective measures, I will tell you that the Jefferson Library is closed to the public, including all its programming. Employees are reporting to work, but the library is closed. The senior center is currently closed with the exception of the senior meal program, and Cindy has figured out a way how to let those people do food prep, but it's all delivered to an individual's house. There is no in-facility dining. And as I say, generally, these tie to the April 6 date, but the reality is we're thinking indefinitely in terms of those closings having to continue longer. All park and recreation programs have been suspended for a similar timeframe. Municipal court has been suspended at least through April 6 and perhaps longer. And the public counter at Jefferson Utilities has closed. They are accepting payments only via the drive-through. Some other things that may very well occur, there may be some workforce that can be assigned to work from home. I would think those would be very limited numbers of employees. Pretty tough to do that with paramedics and police officers, but, you know, we have some office staff that we're considering trying to do that just to minimize the times when we're all together. Because really, how this works is if someone came into City Hall that, you know, is affected and they have contact with the staff out there, you know, you're all supposed to self-quarantine. And that's the concern about losing bodies and who's left to provide services. We may also do some very limited redeployment of the workforce. Someone hired to do something for us, they may be redeployed to do something else. We're thinking about that. That would apply to a very, very limited number of employees. And then we have the prohibition that happened this afternoon when the governor signed his emergency order limiting public gatherings to 10. I'll turn that over to Ken, and Ken can tell you how he intends to deal and enforce that.
So obviously, it's been fast and furious the last 48 hours for all of us. Dr. Vinnie, this morning, we were good to go and then came 2:00 this afternoon.
We have 16 to rule right now.
We're exempt. So we're exempt. So do you read these exemptions? Yeah, because all of us will be off. But long story short, we got some call complaints already today. The auto auction was one. So what we've been doing is when we get a complaint, we take the order up and we explain to the manager, the owner, what the governor's declaration is. Our idea is not, we don't, we don't, businesses are already going to take a huge hit, and the last thing they need is to have the police department come in and say, "We're going to give you a $500 ticket." If they abjectly refuse, that's a different circumstance. But people have been pretty understanding with it. I came, I just drove by today, subway is still open, so there's still some restaurants open. It's going to take a while for the news to spread. I think we have to use a wide berth of discretion before we go on sending police officers into facilities to shut them down. I'm sure by tomorrow morning, everybody will be aware of it.
Carryout's okay, though.
Carryout, delivery is okay. When it comes to food items, that's just fine. So that's okay. So at least some businesses can still function in some kind of limited capacity at least. But that's kind of where we are at. These are, I would say, these are very severe restrictions placed on us, and it's going to hurt businesses. There's no doubt about it statewide. So, but that, our take on it is, is again, we're going on a complaint-only basis. I'm not going to send officers into facilities now. If an offense happens a day or two, we start seeing that then we're going to go in, but we're going to act as professionals and just educate people. That's what we'd rather do than enforce.
Chief, if someone refuses to obey the governor's orders, I heard you say that you can issue a citation...
Correct.
...$500 fine. Is there any other enforcement?
What I would say, Chris, is especially when it comes to license premises, I think that we would, with the council's emergency declaration, the president's, with the state, at that point, we can order them closed. That means we'll stay there based on the authority granted to us to do.
About non-licensed businesses?
I would assume the same thing, because if the council makes an emergency declaration tonight, it's a really tough thing, but that would be supervisory level stuff where we go in and sit down and talk to a business owner or manager and explain to them, "This is not a choice. This isn't voluntary. This is, basically, you don't have a choice. This is an emergency declaration because it's a public health pandemic." So that's how we do it.
The citation would be returnable in the municipal court.
When I was reading through, I figured it was chapter 25 or whatever it was, I was reading through it, and it automatically, with the emergency declaration, it covers all town, borough, city ordinances. But that would be, and that's what I sent out to my staff, that is an absolute, absolute last resort that has to be made at a supervisory level.
Was it the amount of people? I'm reading the paper and it's 50.
It's 10, Peg. The governor issued a new order. That was yesterday's order. Today, he issued a new order. This is declaration number five. I think you probably can find it online. Emergency order number five. That's the one that deals today with closure of restaurants and taverns and also gathering of 10 persons. With, there are certain exemptions that are listed.
That'll be in tomorrow's paper, Peg.
I'm just looking at Tuesday's paper. That's what I was looking at.
Yep.
Tuesday's paper was 50.
Yep. And that changed this afternoon.
This applies to churches as well, correct?
So I understand it, Mayor? It does. When you take a look...
It just looks as a suggestion by the president, and I read after that, where the number 10 came up. I didn't, I guess that's where I, and from what I'm watching, the gentleman from the health, RC, I can't remember all the, from, he said not to, I guess, he didn't, he said not to get hung up on numbers from 50 to 10 to 25. That's not, not to get hung up on that. And, you know, he said, "Don't go around and count people." But he said, "The idea is to keep the numbers, you know, 50 and less, but, you know, don't get, like, if somebody has 11 people there, don't give them a ticket or something." I guess, let's be careful that we don't go over the top of what we're, you know, what we're telling people to do. Let's just use some common sense.
I couldn't agree with you more.
And not get hung up on numbers. Let's just, you know, use the social, you know, get people six feet, three feet, six feet apart, you know, hand washing, all the stuff that makes more sense than whether we've got 10 or 15 people. That's not as stringent as, you know, as important as the hygiene and staying farther apart from each other and the cleaning of everything, from everything that I've been watching home while I've been sick. And not going to work when you're sick, because that's the other thing. Okay, I'll let you guys keep going.
Well, we're nearing the finish line. Just two more general areas to cover. In terms of future considerations, these are bridges we're going to cross maybe within the next day or so. Looking at a prohibition of employee meetings outside the office, cancellation of scheduled leaves, prohibiting employees traveling outside the area or state from returning to the workplace without satisfying quarantine protocol, and prohibiting the public from visiting municipal facilities with the exception of City Hall. Those are all CDC recommended guidelines. We just haven't implemented them at this time. We're kind of chewing on them, but that may be the next set of things that we have to take a look at. But lastly, the agenda's amended. I think it probably is the last order of business on the agenda. We did add a city council emergency declaration resolution. We're going to suggest that you put that in place tonight. That does basically two things. Number one, it positions the city for any federal or state reimbursement, that might be made available. You don't get that unless you have an emergency declaration. And then the second thing is that designates Tim, in this case, and Ken to act on behalf of the council to address or deal with this particular emergency. And that is really all, I think, I have. Ken, do you have anything else?
Joe?
Other than we'd be glad to answer any questions. You know, this is all moving pretty fast. A lot of this has happened since the last council meeting, quite honestly, and, you know, I expect it to continue to even move as fast in the near term.
What about the election?
There's not been any guidance as far as I can tell you, Peg. The election is still scheduled for that first Tuesday in April, although I think a lot of guidance or guidelines on things the city can do to protect not only people voting, but election workers, which is a concern for us because workers tend to be a vulnerable population, right? The elderly. So we're doubly concerned. So I'm sure there'll be some new procedures put in place, but as far as I know, I haven't read or heard of any discussion somehow that would postpone that election.
Other communities have asked some of their more elderly volunteers to sit this one out, so there may be a need for more election workers.
Got a lot of kids, a lot of students that could sit in.
That's certainly an opportunity, but that's something we're going to need to take action on prior to the next meeting so that we can, they can be duly authorized. Are there any questions, or Tim or Ken?
Yeah, just for you, Amanda, I know that you've been polling your people. Are you having a lot of, a lot of your poll workers not wanting to do this?
So I called all the poll workers that we had scheduled for the April 7 election today. Out of them, I don't have exact numbers, but I was surprised overwhelmingly, majority of them said they are not concerned about this, even concerning their ages, and told me that they still want to work. I did phrase it to them that, you know, if anything changes in the next few days or week, to please let us know as soon as possible, and that, you know, we just want to make sure that they feel that coming to City Hall is safe and within their best interest. I did have some say, "Thank you for calling," and I have decided not to, so.
So I think, Dale, the last word I would say, I would generally say that emergency declaration is important. I want to make sure if anyone has any heartburn about that, that we kind of talk about that now, because, you know, we really kind of put that in place with the 2008 flood, and it was indispensable because you just need someone to make decisions. And sometimes they're relatively quick decisions, and I think it'd be the thing to do, and that's what we would suggest.
Any other questions? You guys just put up a sign. Works for weapons, doesn't it? Put that on the front door and... That's one way to get the guns across. What, Kim, or anyone else?
So then, the emergency declaration, is it open-ended or is it give a specific date for now?
I think it ties to this particular event.
It's open-ended.
Okay. So it doesn't say April 6? It's...
No, no, yeah, right.
Well, I think it'll end when the governor rescinds his emergency orders.
Right. And no one, including the governor, knows when that's going to be. Anything else?
Mayor, you had questioned about the churches. I know the church I attend, they're not having services. They're doing live feed, so I don't know about the rest of them, but that's what they're doing. So we don't need to attend, we just go online.
And that will probably be more common practice in the near future. I mean, that's one option. We also have the resource of our city public access cable station for churches, organizations that would like to make use of that as well.
Yep. We will call them tomorrow. I had a nice conversation with John Fowles about how we can make that available.
We can use that and provide that service to people. Any other questions? If anyone wants to adjourn. Mr. Peachey, Mr. Miller, in favor, signify by saying aye. Your adjourn. Thank you.
We're going to drop you off, Bill and Peggy.
Call this meeting of the common council to order roll call, please.
Alderman Horn.
Here.
Byer. Peachey.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Brandal. Lars.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Kraus.
Resolution number 90, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman, Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, resolution number 90, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for March 17, 2020 is hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for March 2020 in the amounts of $161,979.75. Payroll summary for March 13, 2020 in the amount of $165,178.63. And February manual checks in the amount of $4,534.16. Council minutes from March 3, 2020 of the common council. Licenses, as approved by the regulatory committee tonight. Operators licenses, there were none. Special Class B license for Gomitlukite Days at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds. Six-month Class B license for the Jefferson Blue Devils. And we had one agent transfer for Speedway, the gas station on South Main Street. And finally, we had the, authorize a payment for the flag installation to the Reinhardt Window post of the American Legion, and that was $600, the same as it's been for the last, for the previous years. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lars. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Peachey.
I accept the minutes, I abstain from those.
Miller.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Kraus. Horn.
Aye.
unanimous, resolution number 91, a resolution forwarding sewer televising equipment. In lieu of Alderman Brandal's absence, Alderman Horn, please read it.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number 91. Whereas the city of Jefferson wastewater utility obtained three quotes from vendors for the replacement of sewer televising equipment, and whereas the finance committee has reviewed the quotes and concurs with the recommendation of the wastewater utility superintendent to purchase the equipment from McQueen Equipment of Menominee Falls, Wisconsin, and recommends the same to the common council. And now therefore be resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein awards the purchase of the water sewer televising equipment from McQueen Equipment, and be it further resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, that the city administrator is herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf...
associated with the above action on behalf of the City of Jefferson, following its review by the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved, sir. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Peachey. Any discussion? This was reviewed at finance?
Correct, as he had stated, and it was unanimous there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 92, a resolution approving the contract for the swimming pool resurfacing. Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 92. Whereas the City of Jefferson solicited bids to strip, paint, and plaster, fix any structural repairs, and resurface the Jefferson Family Aquatic Center, and whereas due to the specialization of this process, we received a response from one vendor. And whereas the bid was from Sunseeker Pool Masonry LLC in the amount of $167,026, and whereas the finance committee has reviewed and approved this project, and whereas the overall project estimate is $170,000 that was budgeted in the 2020 capital projects budget, and now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein authorizes the city administrator to sign the contract to resurface the Jefferson Family Aquatic Center with Sunseeker Pool Masonry LLC at a not-to-exceed I would so move.
It's been moved, sir. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 93, a resolution adopting emergency...
Declaration.
Declaration. Thank you. Alderman Horn, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, common council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 93. Emergency declaration, City of Jefferson. Whereas on this day, under Chapter 323 of the Wisconsin statutes, in the City of Jefferson Emergency Management Ordinance, Chapter 46, it is hereby declared that the citywide state of emergency exists in the City of Jefferson. And whereas the World Health Organization designated the COVID-19 pandemic as a public emergency of international concern, and whereas the COVID-19 is a contagious and at times fatally respiratory disease, and whereas the worldwide public pandemic of COVID-19 and the effects of its extreme risk of person-to-person transmission throughout the United States signifies, significantly affect the life and health of our people as well as the economy, and is a disaster that impacts the health, security, and safety of the public. And whereas the Governor of the State of Wisconsin declared a state of emergency, the President of the United States has issued a declaration of national emergency, and the United States Health and Human Services Secretary has declared a public health emergency for the entire United States to aid the nation's healthcare community in responding to COVID-19. And whereas, with the need to be proactive and prepare, we, the common council of the City of Jefferson, find that the potential for disaster exists with, which requires extraordinary, extraordinary measures to protect the health and well-being of our citizens. Declaring a state of emergency will facilitate and expedite the use of the resources to protect persons from the impacts of the spread of COVID-19 while maintaining continuity of operations for the City of Jefferson. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, herein authorize the city administrator and police chief, identified by the City Ordinance 46 as emergency management directors, all the powers conferred upon them by the governing body of the City of Jefferson, under all applicable statutes and ordinances, which, within the discretion of the emergency managers, appear necessary and expedient during this said state of emergency. I so move.
It's been moved, sir. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, no if you're opposed.
Alderman Lars.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Unanimous. The discussion on the VFW Rec Center Commercial Kitchen has been stricken from the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Peachey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tully. On a voice vote, all in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.
Amanda, next.